By either saying aye or raising your hand. I'm an aye.
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 And trustee Mercer has his hand raised and trustee old person has her hand raised. I'm checking for trustee.
Trustee Wake and trustee Sturbis have their hands raised.
Okay, and I didn't.
Vogel is a yes.
And trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. So those minutes are approved unanimously. Now we move on to public comment for non-agenda items. That is public comment on items that we won't be discussing tonight, but that anyone from the public would like the trustees to know your thoughts concerning. And so we welcome public comment both at the beginning and the end of the meeting. And also we take public comment on agenda items as well, but the non-agenda public comment is an opportunity to let us know about things that you'd like us to consider possibly for a future agenda item. So with that being said, Hatton has explained how to raise your hand or unmute yourself. So if anyone wants to make public comment on a non-agenda item, please go ahead and raise your hand or otherwise unmute yourself. We ask that you spell your first or last name or both if they have unusual spellings, and we ask you to keep your comments to three minutes. And so with that being said, I'll look for hands raised and so will Hatton. I am not seeing any Hatton, are you?
That's correct.
Okay, then we will move on. There is correspondence found as attachments into our agenda, beginning on page nine. We move on to item number six, which are reports and announcements. The first is the Health Insurance Trust Fund Report. And the one that's attached to the agenda is for the month of October 2020. We see these routine reports on a periodic basis, usually on a monthly basis. And then we move on to six B, which is announcements from Dr. Watson. So, um, Dr. Watson, go ahead and I'll mute myself.
Okay, thank you Chair Holland. Hopefully everyone can hear me okay. Thanks for everyone's attendance this evening. Really appreciate all those that are participating with us on the Zoom. I just have a couple of announcements from the school district. As you're probably, I think I mentioned at the last meeting, probably aware that we're, we have moved into our new building next to Sentinel High School. We're still in the process of setting up the boardroom, which is, has become kind of a a big technology feat. We've got our tech folks working pretty hard on getting that set up with the microphones and the TV displays. So it is taking a little bit longer than we thought. It's primarily the reason we couldn't be in the, in person this evening because we were, we're getting that new room set up. Hopefully by the December meeting, we will be able to host the board in that room. It's much larger than, than our previous boardroom. So that's, that's good news for social distancing. The other thing I, I wanted to mention is that we, as you recall, at the board level, we talked about this earlier, but just wanted to remind the board. We, we altered our schedule, our schedule related to parent teacher conferences. So those were scheduled, are scheduled earlier in November. And we actually had some days out of school for those parent teacher conferences. We moved those days to next week so that we could continue with full day weeks through most of November. So we took advantage of those weeks, moved our parent teacher conferences, but that means next Monday and Tuesday, we won't have any in-person learning. There is some remote learning happening on Monday for some grade levels, but other than that, there is no in-person learning next week. So I just wanted to make that announcement so the board knew that and that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to seven, which is our consent agenda. This is a procedural mechanism by which the board can consider routine perpuncry matter in a way that's efficient. However, any trustee who wants to have a discussion concerning a consent agenda item can ask that it be taken off the consent agenda at any time, either before or at the meeting. Otherwise consent agenda items are not discussed by the board. We do allow public comment on consent agenda items. And so with that, it looks like there's one item on the consent agenda, which is the September 2020 expenditure and revenue report. Reports which are attached and as is indicated in the agenda, the warrants are available in the business office. And therefore, is there a motion to approve the attached revenue and expenditure reports?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Lorenzen.
Second.
By, I saw the trustee McDonald's hand first, so it looks like it's second by trustee McDonald. And as I indicated, there will be no board discussion. Is there any public comment? Just scrolling, but I'm not seeing any so far.
That's correct.
Okay. I just had something weird happen. Oops. I'm okay. I just kind of zoomed out of Zoom for one moment, so apologies for that. So all trustees in favor of the motion to approve the item on the consent agenda, please indicate by raising your hand. And that. I haven't seen trustee Hobbins yet, or else say aye.
Aye.
Vogel is a yes.
And trustee old person? Let me double check if it is raised.
I think trustee old person may have dropped her cell service. I don't see her in the meeting right now.
Okay, so it looks like as to all trustees present, the motion to approve the item on the consent agenda passes unanimously. Then we move on to item eight under old business, which is to approve the second reading of new board policy 8205, procurement of school food. And so as the board members may recall, board trustees, trustees may recall, it was presented by the administration for review and discussion on September 22nd. It was approved on first reading. It was posted for public comment. I don't see a notation in the agenda background, but I believe there was no public comment received. Is that correct? Dr. Watson, I see you not. Okay, and a copy of the policies included in the packet. So the recommendation is that the trustees adopt board policy 8205 on this second reading. Is there a motion to do so? Moved by trustee Decker. Is there a second? Sorry, it takes a minute to scroll down. Second by trustee Evgaris. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. Is there any public comment? I'm just scrolling to the end of the participants list.
I don't see any.
I don't see any. So all trustees in favor of adopting board policy 8205, which has to do with procurement of school food. Either raise your hand or indicate by saying aye.
Vogel is yes.
Just checking to see if trustee old person has been able to join again.
Don't see her on right now.
So as to all trustees present, it is unanimous. So we will move on to B.
Sorry, I just couldn't get to my button in time if you were looking for me. Here.
Okay, so it, it, thank you for clarifying that. I thought I had actually seen your hand up, but thank you. So I'll lower my hand and remind other trustees to do so. So we'll move on to B, teaching and learning. One, which is and just as a bit of explanation, it is on as a one and a two. Because at the time of the agenda setting and the tentative identification of items to be considered on the agenda, it wasn't yet determined whether there would be the same kind of recommendation for K8 as there might be for 912. And so that's why there's a one. I'm sorry, did someone say something?
I think we've taken care of it.
Okay, so with that being said, Dr. Watson, I'll, I'll let you explain and you can explain if it's more a unified conversation now, or if we need to break it down into two different recommendations. So I'll turn it over to you and put myself on mute.
Yeah, thank you trustee Holland, Chair Holland. I, I do believe you'll continue to see these recommendations separate as we move forward. As, as you're well aware, our COVID task force has been meeting and discussing this item along with a lot of other COVID related items, but it was the desire of the task force to start differentiating between between grade levels. And so this is an effort to just show the board that as we bring this forward in the future, there, there very well could be different recommendations based on the grade level. And so that's why I believe it's important to keep these items split. Just so happens this evening that the recommendations are fairly similar, but there are some differences between the two, and I just want to talk through those. So the, the first, the first item that, that I'd like to talk about is the, is the 912 recommendation. But before I do that, I do want to give the board a quick update regarding some of the data that we're looking at and, and we actually created a, a data dashboard that we will be updating as we go along. But I'm going to share that on the screen right now. And for those that are on Zoom and can see that on your screen, you're, you're looking at the data dashboard. It is split between two distinctly different pieces of, of data. So the, what we call the primary indicators, those indicators are set, actually devised and defined at the, at the county level. So the, the first set of data that you're looking at here is, is county level data, not, not school data. You may ask why it's important to look at county level data. And as, as I said in our last meeting, when we did some of the, when we did some of the background on this, you know, if you, if you take a look at a couple of the national models that are, that are giving guidance to school districts, the CDC model and the Harvard Global Health Institute model, both of these models have given guidance to school districts specifically around decision-making with regards to school districts. And so that's, that's why we're using some of this community data because this data is promoted by both of those organizations as things that school districts should review and should look at when they're making decisions about school, specifically in-person school. So we talked about this last time, but just to remind you that there's two primary indicators that are recommended by both of those national organizations. One is the incident rate, which is the number of new cases per 100,000 residents in Missoula, seven day average. And so for that, at week ending last Friday, that was 68 new cases per 100,000 residents. That was a seven day average. You'll notice that we actually put some triggers and some markers on here. This is the same marker that's being used by county health. If you look at their website and look at their triggers, they would also have this one in the red as well because what, what they're, what they're striving for, their goal would be to bring that under 25 new cases per 100,000. So obviously we're not there. We're at 68. The second one that is a, a primary indicator is the test positivity rate. And again, you can see that's also flagged red. Anything above 10% is, is not ideal. And so obviously we've been above 10% and, and we continue above 10%. So that's why that one is flagged red. The other thing the county looks at, which I think is important for us to continue to look at as well, is the route of transmission in the county. As long as the confirmed cases are, have contracted by a close contact, they, that, they generally view that as, as positive because that means that there's less community spread if the, if the cases are contracted from close contacts. So that's why they have that one in the green. But it is, they still have 32% of note that they believe is community spread. So I wanted to point those out as the primary indicators. The, the committee has looked at a variety of pieces of data, but these two pieces of data are of, of concern by committee members because of the, of the nature of where, where we're currently trending in, in the county. We also considered several pieces of secondary indicators, and I want to go through these one by one and kind of explain where we believe we're at currently. The first, the first one is the number of active cases in our school district. So these are active cases, either students or staff that are associated with our in-person learning model. And so we track that every week. This last week, we had 22 active cases. That's ranged anywhere from 10 to 25. So we're, you know, we're right in the neighborhood there of what we've typically seen at 22. One thing we are doing now is we're comparing that with the number of active cases in the county per 10,000. We're using 10,000 because there's about 10,000 students and staff in our district. So we felt like it was a pretty good comparison. Currently in the county, there's about 87 active cases per 10,000 people. So we just did a, in order to get the triggers, we did a division. We're about 25% of the county number. So that's why we're still in the green. If we get higher in terms of active cases and if that percentage gets, gets higher because our active cases go up and that county's active cases go down, then we could be in the yellow, the orange. But we feel pretty good in terms of where we're at with our active cases right now in the district. When we compare that to active cases in the county per 10,000. Another piece of data that we are reviewing every week is the route of transmission. Ours is a little different than the county's. We look at how the, how the confirmed case contracted the virus. But through case investigation, we determined about 71% of our new cases contracted outside of school. We still believe that the transmission in school is very low, if, if any at all, but the majority of our cases are, are contracting outside of school. One thing of note on this particular piece of data, we're seeing a larger number of cases that have unknown transmission. That means through, through case investigation, it's very difficult for us to determine how the, the virus was contracted. So the percentage for this particular week was 24% of our confirmed cases were in that unknown category, which is higher than it has been in previous weeks. We are also carefully watching our staffing. This is where the, the recommendations may differ in the future. So I think it's a good idea to consider staffing at all three levels. We noticed that staffing at K5 is definitely an issue for us. It, it continues to be an issue and it's, it's, what, what happens is that as the cases go up in the county, we have more teachers and more classified staff that are close contacts to confirmed cases, or they are confirmed cases themselves. And so as the case numbers go up in the county, we're seeing more and more staffing issues. This particular week, we had some programs that were shut down due to staffing. Agricultural education, our ag ed program was shut down. Our early kindergarten program at Jefferson had, has been shut down for a while due to staffing. And then we had an extended resource program at one of our elementary schools that was also shut down due to staffing. In addition to this, and I haven't updated this chart yet, but I will, we had three schools this week. Three elementary schools that were approaching 20% absenteeism. We're talking about staff absenteeism, not students, but staff. And when we get to that 20% number, it's very difficult to maintain staffing in, in our schools. So staffing is an indicator that we will continue to watch very carefully. Many of you might have heard about some other schools around the state that have closed. And from what I can tell in, in speaking with my colleagues around the state, the vast majority of those closures are due to, to staffing constraints. We are also tracking the length of time it takes us to do our contact tracing. So you will recall, I think I mentioned last week, that our contact tracing is done by us now instead of county health. And so we found that was better to do it ourselves because we could get to that confirmed cases quicker and we could get the close contacts notified in a, in a timely manner so that they weren't coming back to school. So we're still looking at doing that contact tracing in less than 24 hours. And that's, that's our goal is to keep that under 24 hours if we can. It comes a little more difficult on the weekends because we may not find out about the cases right away. And it's obviously harder to get a hold of, of teachers and staff over the weekend to, to do some of that contact tracing. But we're, we're trying to keep it at 24 hours or below. And we're doing well right now with our contact tracing. Our school nurses have also been trained and so they are participating in that as well. So that's, that's very much a help for us. And the last category on, that we're, that we're tracking, there are five key mitigation strategies that are recommended by the CDC. Use of masks, distancing, hygiene, cleaning and contact tracing. As I just said, we're doing really well on the contact tracing. But, but for the other four, I've asked the principals to give me an assessment on how they're doing on the other four. You can see the various grade levels have given me an assessment. Generally, if they were, if we were falling short on one of those strategies, it was generally the distancing one, specifically at K5 in some of our lower grade levels. Obviously, as, as kids are younger, it's, it is, it is difficult to keep them distanced at all times during the day. So that's one that, that, that we know we can do a better job at, but it's, it is difficult. I just, I think, be transparent about that. It is maybe impossible at certain grade levels to maintain that distancing just because of the nature of students. At high school, I think where we're falling down at high school is our cleaning protocols. We have several custodians that are out due to being close contacts of confirmed cases. And so we're, we're struggling a little bit this week with our, with our cleaning protocols at high school. So I think that's a good check every week to see where we are on those five mitigation strategies. And that's definitely a secondary indicator that we want to consider. So just as you look through this, this data dashboard, I just want to remind you that the primary indicators really do drive a lot of decisions with regards to schools. But I think it's important that we also consider the secondary indicators as we consider making these decisions. And our committee is looking at all of these together, but our, our committee is definitely focusing a lot of the decisions around the primary indicators. So I've got, I'm going to stop sharing that because I got to move to a little bit more information for the 912 recommendation. So again, we've broken this up. I, I guess I would encourage the board to also, as you, as you look at this stuff, try to focus just on the 912 recommendation first. We'll be able to talk about the elementary recommendation next. And there is some additional data that I want to share regarding the elementary recommendation. So for this first recommendation, I think I already mentioned this, the areas of concern that we have in the county are that test positivity rate and the incident rate. We also have some concerns around staffing our buildings. The areas that I think we're doing really well are the active cases in our district remain low when compared to the active cases in the county. And our route of transmission, the majority of cases transmitted outside of the school. So the recommendation from the committee is that high schools should stay in the hybrid learning model for the remaining of semester one. Semester one ends on January 22nd. We would review this decision, obviously if case numbers get worse. I think the committee wanted to make it clear that, you know, if, if we need to go to remote learning for the entire school district, we need to be ready to, to do that. And so obviously that would, we would have to review this decision as we watch those case numbers if the situation gets, gets a lot worse. And then this is not part of the recommendation, but I, I wanted to foreshadow for the board likely a future discussion. Our, our committee talked quite a bit about extracurricular activities with regards to the, the winter sports season that's starting up. We've got some activities starting on December 7th. And just based on what we're seeing in the county with regards to positivity rate and incident rate, the committee would like to consider possible restrictions on some of those activities. Specifically, some of the activities that do not allow for physical distancing. So that, that's something we have, we haven't come to any conclusions yet, but we're going to need to do some more discussion as a committee. And we're also going to need to talk with our high school administrative staff with regards to those extracurricular activities. So there's still some planning that needs to be done there. So I will stop my sharing and just open it up for questions from the trustees with regards to the high school recommendation.
Are there questions from any trustee? Just go ahead and raise your hand or unmute yourself and I will look for indications of questions. I'm not seeing any Hatton at this time.
That's correct.
That's correct. Um, Dr. Watson, I have one question, just in terms of, I don't know if the right word is jurisdiction, but what extracurricular activities are considered our responsibility versus extracurricular activities that our students, we know they're engaged in, but they might fall under the parameters of either the governor's directive or city county directives. Is there a way to kind of identify that distinction?
Yeah, I would say the, the city county and the governor's directive both have, have some guidance around crowd size. And so specifically in the county, under the county's most recent restriction, there's some, there's some extra steps that we would need to take if we had spectators at a, at any one of our activities. So that's an area that does fall under the county restrictions. But for the most part, that the actual day-to-day extracurricular activities are considered school activities. And so both the governor's order and the county health order excluded some of their restrictions. They excluded school activities. So if a student's involved in an activity that's school-related, like an extracurricular activity, it's, it, there's, there's obviously restrictions that we place on that activity, but there's really no restrictions placed on the activity from the governor or the county health. Unless, unless you're talking about spectators and that's a little different.
No, that, I, I just wanted to make sure I understood the distinction between who's covered by what directive since there are several, you know, in place right now, or at least two in place. And I did see that schools were to some extent exempt from the governors and the city counties directives. So thanks. With that, then if there's no questions, then the recommendation, do you want to talk about that, Dr. Watson?
Sure. And it's, this one's actually listed in the agenda because we actually had the committee meeting before the agenda was published for this particular recommendation. So the recommendation is that the high school district, with the exception of Seeley Swan High School, should remain in phase one of the reopening plan until the end of semester one, which is January 22nd. This decision should be routinely revisited by the COVID task force and the board of trustees.
Oops, sorry, I unmuted myself. Thank you. And so at this point, I would entertain a motion, the recommendation from the administration, as was just indicated, that with the exception of Seeley Swan High School, MCPS High School District would remain in phase one of the reopening plan until the end of the September, or Sept- semester, the first semester, which is January 22nd.
Well, this is trustee Wake. I'll make that motion.
Okay, and trustee Decker, are you seconding it? Okay, so moved by trustee Wake and seconded by trustee Decker. And now is the time for any board discussions. So go ahead and unmute yourself if you'd like to make any board discussion or comments. And then after that, we will look to public comments. So let me just look for hands raised or folks, I think it's trustee Vogel at this point, who's on the phone. And if I'm correct.
Yes, I'm sorry. Did you need me? I'm sorry.
No, no, I just said, I was just looking for hands raised and in the, and as to Vogel, whether she had unmuted her phone for trustee. Thanks. Sorry about that. I'm kind of trying to read the participants. Talk at this one time. Apologize. Trustee Lorenzen, it looks like your hand is up.
Yeah, I just, I really appreciate the amount of work that's gone into this, the use of the data. You know, the, the acceptance that things could change either way. They could get better or worse. I, I personally never imagined we would be here at this point, but we are here. And so I'm really proud of, of Dr. Watson for bringing a committee in or, you know, in making this a group decision. And appreciate all the people that participated in that. And I support the recommendation.
Thank you. Any other board comments or discussion? Trustee Sturbis?
Um, I, I just thought of something. What would happen if, I think it's got so bad, would the task force be able to, to do something quickly or we'd have to meet to change things if we need to go remote really fast?
That's not really a comment, but I think generally the answer would be we can always hold an emergency board meeting.
Okay.
And if it's truly an emergency board meeting, I, I don't want to speak for board council, but I understand that the 48-hour notice requirement to the public does not apply for true emergency decision-making by the board. decision making by the board.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board discussion? Trustee Decker?
I just want to say what an what a really respectful and committed group of people are working on the task force. I've been fortunate enough to be one of the board members who's been participating in. It is truly safe to say that there is a great diversity of perspectives that came together at the start of the process of meeting. The group has been meeting twice most weeks for an hour to an hour and a half at a time. And these are all folks who are really busy in their lives. It's a huge commitment of time with a lot of reading and sort of wrestling with the data outside of that. So I want to extend my appreciation as well to everybody who's been participating in that process. And and say that my, you know, support is not only because of my own position, but because of the discussions that have happened in that group over the past weeks and month as well.
Thank you. Any other trustee discussion or comment? It looks like trustee Vogel has her hand up, if I am looking correctly. Oh, it looks like it's trustee old person might be back. Trustee old person, I'm sorry.
Hi. Thank you, Chair Holland, and I'm back and I apologize. I'm traveling due to football. But I just want to say I support this recommendation, and I do thank everybody that has served on this committee, this task force, because it's really important. And I just think that I want the our community and M C P S parents, students and teachers know that we are listening to those who may not agree with different areas of what we are doing. But we are taking into account health, and I think that's one thing I'm very open about is that I'm really trying to make sure that our community is safe, and especially those vulnerable populations who are more at health risk for this. So I just want to thank Dr. Watson and the team for doing this work.
Thanks. Any other trustee comment or discussion? I'm just looking for either physical hands raised. Trustee Hobbins, looks like you have your hand up. Go ahead.
I just wanted to echo fellow trustees in thanking the task force, and I think it's been an incredible amount of work and really appreciate you all digging deep and and just to also say that that we are absolutely appreciative of all the comment that's come in from the public and talking to the community and and listening to our public health officials. This is not a black and white issue, and we know, and we take it really seriously and are trying to consider all sides, and I am going to support this with deep appreciation of the task force for all their work.
Thank you. Any other trustee comment or discussion? Just looking for physical hands up or virtual hands raised. Apologies, it takes a moment. I am not seeing any Hatton.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Well, I'm just gonna lower trustee old person's hand. I think she's made her comment.
Okay. So with that being said, we'll now open it up to any public comment on the motion that's on the floor that the trustees are considering. And as was indicated, if you raise your hand, you will be acknowledged in the order in which your hand was raised. And then we'll Hatton and I will both look to see whose hands are raised, and we will call upon you, and we ask you to follow the protocols of stating your first and last name and organization if you represent one, and try to limit your comments to three minutes. So with that being said, it's time for public comment.
Okay, I see Ms. Lasilla, if you would like to unmute and make your comment.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Deborah Lasilla, and I am a mom of a high schooler in the school system. I'm also a registered nurse that includes frontline COVID work. I wanted to first thank you, everybody on the board, the superintendent and the task force for all your hard work. As I work in my area of the COVID attempt or work, I I do appreciate how much work they've done as well, and I appreciate it. I also wanted to say that I really support the recommendation to stay in the hybrid model as Superintendent Watson outlined after his review of the data. And also support that you know, the board and the task force continue to reevaluate and watch very carefully our situation in Missoula to make their decisions going forward, whether to switch to full remote or not. The pandemic's awful for everybody, and I know all of us want to have our kids be back with their teachers full time, but now is definitely not the time. Resources are resources are thin and thinning, and we need to think about not overwhelming or overburdening our healthcare system and resources. And I'm just also like to say, if anybody listening is not alarmed by the data that Dr. Watson just reviewed, you should be. Those numbers, I've been watching those since March. And those numbers are very alarming. And I appreciate everybody's hard work in trying to keep everybody safe and reduce the spread of COVID nineteen. Also like to add, if I may, encourage you to get your flu shots. And if any school or the task force needs some extra help from a registered nurse, I'd be happy to help. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lasilla. I hope I said that correctly. I apologize if I didn't.
You did. Thank you.
Any other public comment? And I'll just try to. I appreciate how many people are present in a virtual sense at this board meeting, so it takes me a minute to to see if anyone else wanted to make public comment. I don't see any other hands raised, Hatton, do you?
Correct.
Okay, so we've had public comment, and we have a second in motion. So all trustees in favor of the motion. Generally, I'm trying to summarize it to with the exception of Seeley Swan High School remain in phase one of the reopening plan until the end of the first semester, which is January twenty second, please indicate by raising your hand.
Vogel is yes.
Thank you. And I'm looking for trustee. Oh, there he is. Trustee Mercer's hand is up. Let me just double check on trustee McDonald. It's all alphabetical order, so I have to.
Trustee McDonald has raised her hand as well.
Okay, thank you so much. And so it appears that the motion passes unanimously as to all trustees. So we will move on to B two, which is response to in-person instruction concerning COVID nineteen at the elementary level. So, Dr. Watson, I'll mute myself again, and if you want to provide information related to that agenda item, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Chair Holland. I I don't necessarily need to review the COVID data because we just did that. And the COVID data for our community is the same, no matter which school you're at. So the the incident rate and the test positivity rate are still areas of concern for us. And then the staffing issue is exasperated. I I mentioned this already, but it's it's a lot worse at our K five schools. I think I mentioned this earlier this week, we had three K five schools that were at or above twenty percent staff absenteeism, which is very difficult to manage that. We're we're doing okay, but there's a lot of staff that are pulling double duty or are in for other people. And we do have some permanent subs in the buildings, which has really helped. We added a permanent sub at at each one of our elementary schools this fall. And what a permanent sub is, is somebody that's at the building every day and and gets a little bit of more of an incentive to be there on a permanent basis. So that's really helped. One of the things that our K five principals have been discussing is perhaps adding another permanent sub if we can find folks that can do that work. So that might help as we go forward. But we have been communicating on a regular basis with our parent community and explaining our staffing concerns and explaining that there could be a day where we have to shut down a grade level or a school and and move that school to remote learning, likely due to staffing. And so that wouldn't necessarily take a board action, because we're talking about an individual school or an individual grade level. But we we may have to make that decision fairly quickly, and it like I said, it likely to be due to staffing. I I do want to, this particular recommendation is very similar to the previous one. However, I I do think it's important that the board considers some other things that that the committee's been looking at. And and those things revolve around academics and remote learning. We know that remote learning is is more difficult for our our younger students. I think our teachers are doing really well, but it's it's not perfect. And and obviously, remote learning at a younger age level is just is just a lot more difficult. So we had several meetings ago, one of the trustees asked about what we knew about remote learning in terms of academics, and specifically what we're going to talk about next. It it doesn't relate directly to their recommendation, although you'll see, you'll see at the end why I wanted to talk about this. Definitely was a conversation among our among our committee. And so I I think it's an important piece that's indirectly related to the recommendation. So what what I want to do is just take a minute and and talk about this question. What do we know about spring remote learning? I mean, what did we learn about when kids returned in the fall? What do we know that that happened with remote learning last spring? And again, this data, I want to be really clear. This data has nothing to do with what we're currently doing. It has nothing to do with the hybrid model or, you know, being in school two days a week. This is strictly related to what we think we learned from students being in remote learning last spring. So the first, the first thing we're going to look is the is the reading assessment. And I'm going to ask Amy Shattuck if she's on the on the phone, I think on the Zoom, if she would unmute and talk us through this reading assessment data.
You bet. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. So what what I've been asked to present tonight is just to take a a quick look at the two different, at two different cohorts from fall of last year to fall of this year. This very first one is, I believe this first one is, yep, kindergarten of twenty nineteen and first grade of twenty twenty. Now, remember, last time when I talked about the STAR three sixty assessment, we talked about the fall, winter and spring times that the the entire district takes this. But in kindergarten and first grade, it is that early literacy piece. So they only take one. They don't take a separate reading and a math. But we'll also look at a second and third grade cohort. So if you're looking at this, this first one talks about, if you look at the fall twenty nineteen Kinder, I separated non-title schools and Title I schools. So we have five non-title schools and four Title I schools. And so if if you're looking at this, you see that kindergartners walking into a non Title I school are sitting at about thirty percent. Now, this is thirty percent non proficient. That means seventy percent are walking in with pretty solid skills, thirty percent or not. And the orange, the orange bar you'll see is actually our Title I. And that's about fifty percent of our kids walking in non proficient. Now, this was fall of, remember, this was fall of twenty nineteen, kindergartners. Now, if we follow this cohort into this year, the fall of twenty twenty, what you see is you see that kids who are first graders walking into non Title I schools were at about a forty four point nine percent of kids who are are not proficient. And in our Title I schools, that that was increased as well to about fifty four percent. So do you want to move to the next one, Dr. Watson? This is this cohort, let's take a look at this. I want, I also want the caveat to that everybody knows that this, these, this isn't quite apples to apples, because the MOA, the the digital or the Missoula Online Academy is not included in the fall twenty twenty. So just keep that in mind. The second one is second grade of fall twenty nineteen and the cohort moving into fall twenty twenty. So non-title schools, we have kids walking in at about thirty seven percent. And then Title I schools at about fifty three percent. Okay, so third graders this year, and this is interesting. We have kids from non-title schools walking in at about thirty four percent and title schools at about forty four percent. So we have less kids who are non proficient this year than we did last fall. So one of the things that I found interesting was that during a webinar that I participated in this week with Renaissance, which is the STAR company, our data as a district really mirrors national data. So what we're seeing is that younger students, like kindergarten, first and second graders, are struggling more with early literacy and reading where students in fourth through sixth or seventh grade have struggled more in math. So that's a little picture of those cohorts.
Thank you, Amy.
Yeah.
So I'm going to go through the math next. And so what Amy was just showing you was reading and specifically kids that are not proficient when they start the year in the fall. So really, you have to think about this. This is really before they have have any real instruction. This is right basically when they come in the first month or so. It's it measures which students are not not proficient in reading. So the bars that you're seeing there are any students not, for the percentage of students that are not proficient or below grade level in reading. The math one was is a little different, and I I do think it's important to to identify this assessment. So we we actually switched assessment this year to to I Ready. And so I Ready is a national assessment, a math assessment. And Elise, Elise Guest, our curriculum director, is also on the Zoom in case we've got any questions about I Ready, and I'll let her talk about it in just a second. But I I want to tell you what what the data is you're looking at. So what was really interesting is, as as we started looking across the country regarding I Ready math assessment, what we found out is that they have already done some national benchmarking and tried to figure out sort of what happened during remote learning last spring, because the most of the entire country was in remote learning last spring. So what what's what's interesting is this is just the fall assessment of this this fall. And the the bars on the left hand side are the national numbers. And so what you see is in the in the schools across the country in grades one through five, about twenty seven percent of the kids that 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 came in in the fall across the country were were below grade level. Now, what's interesting is when they went back and looked at the previous year, and that number was only twenty three percent. So it is a little bit higher this fall for math across the country. And then when they looked at just their Title I schools, the percentage was higher. So thirty two percent this fall across the country nationally were below grade level. So we thought it was a great time to do a comparison for our district, since this is the first year we've taken this assessment. And I, different than the than the the reading assessment that that Amy just spoke of, this, these numbers actually include the online academy students. But we're seeing some kind of mirror the national data, although although better than the national data. So that's good news. But twenty one percent of our of our students in grades one through five were below grade level in math when they returned this fall. And that compare that to the national at twenty seven. So it's it is better. And remember, we didn't take this the previous fall, so we can't really compare that. But twenty one percent of all of our schools in below grade level. Now, it varies a lot between our nine schools. So remember, we have nine elementary schools. The the lowest, the lowest percentage for any of the schools, I believe, was like eleven percent. So at that particular school, there for any of the schools, I believe, was like eleven percent. So at that particular school, there was only eleven percent below grade level. And at some of our other schools, our highest school had thirty-six percent below grade level. So it really does vary from school to school. And so the red, the red bar shows you just our Title I schools. On average, if you average all of our Title I schools, grades one through five, twenty-eight percent of our students returned in below grade level in math. And compare that to the national data at thirty-two, we're doing better. But that still is a concern for us with you know, a large chunk of students over twenty-five percent returning this fall below grade level in math. So we wanted to just show you that because this is data that the committee's been looking at as well. And I think it is, it is relevant to the discussion. It doesn't necessarily change the immediate recommendations. But I do think that it's, it is important for us to continue this discussion. So what I'll do next is just, well, let me go back here. And I'm sorry, Dr. Guest, do you want to say anything about I Ready? I know that you had taken a really close look at this data, so you might be able to add some things that I didn't say.
Thanks, Dr. Watson. You did a great job of talking about the data, and I really appreciate an opportunity to highlight the data and specifically I Ready and Ready Math as a new adopted curriculum for our K five students and teachers. I did want to take a moment to just commend our teachers. They have done a phenomenal job. If you can imagine amongst all the other chaos of COVID, taking the time to learn a new robust curriculum like this and implementing it at such a high level of integrity. Many people might not know, but they spent three days over the summer during training. They spent another half day training in October. And all with a learning of how to personalize learning for our students. So taking the results of this I Ready assessment and then providing personalized attention and instruction to each and every one of our children. It's a phenomenal opportunity for us to help each and every child grow. And already we're seeing some great gains where kids are actively involved in their learning and are reaching up to ninety percent proficiency rates on a regular basis throughout the week and through each, every mini lesson. So I just wanted to commend the teachers for all that they're doing and how we're seeing a direct result to our students and how they're actively learning in this new math curriculum. Next up, we have some more training with our leaders to help support them through this implementation. And I think it's a great opportunity to look at this data and see where we have some equity issues, where we have some highlights of how to inform our instruction. And I think it's really exciting. So I think it's a great step in the right direction. So thanks, Dr. Watson.
Yep. And thank you for that information about the implementation. I think that is important. The last thing I'll do is just talk to the board about the actual recommendation. So if you noted in your board agenda, we, we actually met, the committee met on Tuesday. And it was after the point in time when we had to publish the agenda. So we weren't able to get the recommendation in the printed agenda. But we did have this recommendation up on our website as part of our committee notes. But the recommendation from the committee, based on the, the the incident rates that you're seeing in the, in the community and based on the test positivity rate, our recommendation is to extend the hybrid learning model until the end of first semester. And obviously review that decision if case counts get worse in Missoula County. So that recommendation is the same for both K five and six eight. Our committee asked to split that apart because at some point we may have different recommendations for those two. But for tonight, we have the same recommendation for both K five and six eight. I did want to point out that we had a discussion regarding alternative schedules or alternative models for some of our special populations. We talked about our families in transition students. Could we have a different schedule for those students to provide more support? That was a discussion that was started in the committee. It relates somewhat to what we were just talking about too with the data. But it was agreed that we couldn't really finalize that, those decisions until we had further planning time with our K five principals. So I, I think our next step would be to go to our K five principals and start talking about some of this data, start talking about some of these special populations that we're concerned about and then bring that back to the committee at some point. So I just want to point that out because I think it is important that, you know, to recognize that we are all worried about the, the current spread of COVID in our community. But there's also other concerns related to instruction in the remote learning model specifically for our, for our younger students. So I will stop there and and just answer any questions that the board might have.
Are there, excuse me, does anyone have a question? Looks like trustee Decker. And then I'll check again after trustee Decker unmutes and asks her question. And then trustee Lorenzen, it looks like.
Thanks. Just a kind of a quick question about data, about math. And you had mentioned that the I Ready data does include the MOA. And I'm wondering if that is encompassed in the title or the not title bar? Or if they're broken out by their sort of sending school?
Good question. Good question. Thanks for asking that. So we actually had them separated out as an MOA group. So that they're not, they should be assigned to their, their home school, but we didn't do that. It's broken out as an MOA group. So in that particular bar chart, the, the left-hand bar was all schools, which would include the MOA kids. The right-hand bar was Title I schools, but the MOA kids wouldn't be in that, in that right-hand bar. So that's something we can fix going forward.
Oh, so the left-hand bar is the aggregate of all the schools?
Correct.
Right hand was the title schools pulled out.
Correct.
Might have been labeled to say non-title, but maybe I'm wrong about that. So that makes sense. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the reading one that Amy showed you was slightly different. She had non-title and title. And you can tell that Amy and I didn't do a lot of coordination before. So, but yeah, we can fix that. So it reads a little more similar.
Trust, is that, does that answer your question? Good. So trustee Lorenzen has a question and then trustee Mercer has a question. So go ahead.
Yeah, my question is for Robin. It's, I guess, more of a general question. In the spring, we talked about how many kids were engaged and then it was a percentage less than a hundred. So now, are you confident that we have everyone engaged and are they staying engaged? Are you losing anybody in this system?
Good question. So I'll talk in general terms. The, there are, there are students both in the MOA and students in the in-person hybrid model that are not engaged. And there's a variety of reasons that they may not be. We're doing the best we can to engage those students, both during the remote days, during the MOA. But there, yes, there are students, I don't know the percentage off the top of my head, but that's something we can check with our principals. I would suspect it's probably better than it was last spring, but we do have a percentage of kids probably in the neighborhood of less than ten percent that are, that are not engaged in, in remote learning. But you have to also ask yourself what percentage of students during a normal year are disengaged. And you may not see it directly, but you know, ask yourself what percentage of students you know, struggle with school or are absent from school. We have disengaged students every year. And that's something that our, our school teams are work really diff, you know, work really diligently on is putting in those systems of support to, to catch those students that are not engaged. And that continues this year, both in the MOA and in the in-person learning.
Thanks. Trustee Mercer, looks like you have a question.
Yeah, I guess my question is about, is there, I'll say for lack of a better word, spare capacity. As just a little anecdotal example, the way the alphabet worked out in my son's case. Two days a week have nine kids, as I understand it from him, and the other two days have twelve. So you would logically get from that, that we think twelve's okay to have in that classroom, which would then say that there's three slots in those other days. Shouldn't we fill them with someone? The classrooms are different sizes. Shouldn't we figure out? I mean, I'm assuming this is going to pass and we're going to stay two. And I'm assuming we're going to stay two for the rest of the year personally. So shouldn't we scrap to find those few seats for, and maybe it's the work I do, but you know, we, I, my entity represents parents who have mental illness and they can make it with five days a week of school. And those families are falling apart with two. And God, if there's any space, shouldn't we use it? And so I guess the question is, is there space or is that insane?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. I think the, that's why we need to engage our elementary principals in this discussion. Because those are the types of things we want to ask. We also want to talk about what are the special populations that, that, you know, that we might want to target in terms of providing more support? And what does that support look like? Now, there is likely spaces in the school that might be available for other groups to come in. But remember that the other issue that we have to solve is a staffing issue because we don't have the staff to support, you know, additional cohort groups. And so that's some of the careful planning that will need to happen. I think the real question that both our committee needs to wrestle with and the board needs to wrestle with is are, are we committed to trying to find a way to, to serve some of those special populations? And if that's the, if that's the marching order, then, then, you know, we need to start planning that.
Any other questions? Looking. I'm not seeing any other trustee hands up.
That's correct.
Okay. So at this point, and help me if I, I'm going to paraphrase because I've got the language from the recommendation from high school. But at this point, the administration's recommendation is that at the K eight level that the student should, or the, I guess, the educational program should remain in phase one of the MCPS reopening plan until the end of the first semester, January twenty-second. With the understanding that the decision can be routinely revisited by both the COVID task force and the Board of Trustees. So I will look for a motion from someone.
I'd like to make a motion. I would like to push the motion forward as recommended with two additions to be a little bit more specific to what Cohen was talking about and Dr. Watson. I'd like adding on to the end for our December eighth board meeting, I'd like the administration to come back with a feasibility plan for returning K two to at least hybrid plus, if not five days a week and what that would look like. Just so we have that vetted out. And the second part, I'd like a feasibility plan for any other perhaps special areas, fit kids, whatever it may be, what that would look like to bring those kids back in either hybrid plus or five days a week and to be presented at the fifth or eighth of December meeting. And also just as a side note, as we're looking at these feasibility plans, keep it in mind our five mitigation strategies.
So just before I ask for a second, trustee Aguirre, I want to make sure that I'll state your motions clearly. So whoever, whatever happens next, everyone understands the motion on the floor. So the motion by trustee Aguirre is to his motion is to, for MCPS at the K eight level to remain in phase one of the MCPS reopening plan until the end of the first semester, which ends on January twenty-second. But would include a discussion at the December eighth board meeting of any feasibility studies to look at either younger grades or identified areas of students. For example, family into transition students moving to a hybrid plus model, if at all feasible. Did I capture your motion?
I think you said it better than I did. So yes.
And so it looks like trustee Lorenzen has her hand up. I don't know if that's.
I second trustee Aguirre's motion, Jeff's motion.
Thanks. And so now we have a second in motion. And this is a K twelve trustee decision. So we have K twelve trustees making the motion, seconding the motion. So now it's time for board comment. Trustee Decker has her hand up first. So go ahead, trustee Decker.
Thanks. I would love to see those discussions happen. I'm concerned about the motion, including a requirement to have a feasibility study ready on December eighth for that. Because it would be my hope that the administration would include the task force in that process. And that just takes a little bit of time. I would, you know, not, I would hope that we would continue to work with that diverse group to develop that, that plan and sort of the considerations that would be part of a plan like that. So although I, in spirit, a hundred, I have been a proponent of a creative and like child-specific plan that gets the kids who need it most, they're the most, whatever that means, for a very long time. However, I'm concerned about the motion, including a requirement for something I'm not sure can happen with a week of nobody in the buildings next week. I'm just concerned about the timeframe.
And that's a fair point, trustee Decker. The reason I said December.
I have to interrupt you. We don't, I know it seems kind of weird, but we don't talk to each other at a board meeting because it's really board comment to the board as a whole. And so one of the things that can happen is a friendly amendment where since you, you made the motion to say, you know, if possible, a feasibility study would be presented to the board. But I'll, I'll just throw it out there to you in terms of whether or not you want to continue forward with the motion you made or with some modification to it.
I'm such a rookie. I do apologize.
And someone else said.
Well, I, I understood the motion when you restated it to say any feasibility studies available. And I don't remember the original motion requiring, requiring feasibility studies, but my, I understood it to mean if it could be found from other sources or see what other schools are doing. So I understood it to say if available. I didn't understand it to mandate a feasibility study. So.
So if I can clarify, so the, if, if we're understanding all of us on the same page and any trustee feel free. And since this is all recorded, we also have an independent record of what was said. But if the motion included language which indicated if feasible or if available, and if it didn't originally state that, trustee Aguirre, would you be willing to make that friendly amendment to add in this language like it's feasible?
Yeah. So, so the amendment is, yeah, I, I would make that either places that we can find it, sure. Or if we can do it internally, I, my preference would be is that we do it internally. And to talk to trustee Decker's concern there, just briefly. The reason that I said December eighth, which is, you know, three weeks out here, is we only have one board meeting in December. And so we would, we would be pushed back till the second week of January. And I know it's a tight deadline. We do have next week off, which is the bear. But if we don't even see anything till the second week of of January, we're going to have to make a decision at that point. And God willing, these numbers drop over the next six weeks and we can make, you know, hopefully some, some better decisions in January in the way of hopefully getting more kids back in. So I would say, how about I put this caveat on it to make everybody feel better? Sorry, what did I do?
See, Aguirre, if you don't mind withdrawing your motion and we'll have a second. And if you want to, if that's okay, since you're the person who made the motion, if you want to restate a motion, whatever motion you'd like to make, then we'll look for a second to that and then we'll have a discussion. Does that work?
Perfect. I withdraw my motion.
I withdraw my second.
And I will restate my motion that by the December eighth meeting, if possible, we would like, I would like to see a feasibility plan to get for our K two students getting into more days a week, either hybrid plus or five days a week or just more days. Also any at-risk students. So that feasibility plan can be from models we've seen from other schools or come from internally from our own. But if possible, that would be my motion.
Thanks. And now I look for a second to that motion.
Second.
And it's seconded by trustee Lorenzen. And so it's now time for board discussion. And I'll just throw out a procedural piece of information. Dr. Watson and I have discussed and we noted that there are five Tuesdays in the month of December. So if need be, there's that odd extra Tuesday in December, I think it's December twenty-ninth or so, which would still let us add a special board meeting two weeks and still give us two weeks before the regularly scheduled January meeting. It's not being scheduled now, but it's just an anomaly of the calendar that Dr. Watson and I discussed because of the nature of how unstable our world is right now. So that's just a procedural clarification. So we have a second in motion. Now it's time for board discussion. So that's just a procedural clarification. So we have a second in motion. Now it's time for board discussion. And I'm.
I, I'd like to just say one thing of, of kind of why I'm making this recommendation. You know, based off of kind of what Cohen is saying there and Dr. Watson brought up and the committee has had a lot of discussion around. So far, we've had a lot of discussion around, uh, about this bug and how it is increasing our community. Although, um, the county health officer today had some encouraging news. Hopefully things are flattening out in our community and we can cross our fingers. So that's true. But we have a lot of parents that do want to get their kids back to school, either four or five days a week. And to this point, we, we haven't even given them a plan or a feasibility, um, of what that could look like. Or if it's not feasible at all, if we can't do our five mitigation strategies in our schools. I think having a plan, um, delaying staying in hybrid till the end of the first semester. But at the same time, coming back with a plan for those folks to feel better that says, hey. When we get in a better spot in the community with this bug and we hit some certain indicators, we have a plan that we can implement. But to get our kids back in school, I think that would, um, ring well with a lot of parents. And, uh, um, I think that's important. We have to think about all groups and, and all, uh. Versions of people that are looking into this. And I think that just having a plan in place would really help.
Thanks. And I see trustee Mercer has his hand up. Go ahead, trustee Mercer, with any comments or observation.
Yes. So this is kind of a hybrid motion now, right? Cause one part is to. Stay in two days a week until January. And the other part is the, the additional stuff about the study. So I fully support the additional stuff for the study echoing what, uh, Jeff just said, I think. I, we're all guessing at what the community feels. I don't know, but it's clearly divided. I personally believe there's a large segment of the community that heard at the beginning that we were going to practice for three weeks and then we were going to go back. And, and they're not feeling heard. And so just out of matter of. Morale and having people not check out, I think there needs to be some acknowledgement and. That, that we're hearing them and, and doing something. Um, so I fully support that. As to the main motion, um, and maybe it's the work I do. In my heart of hearts, I believe the balance of harm to the kids this winter and two days a week is going to outweigh the balance of harm the other way. And I'm going to oppose it. Um, and that's just, I gotta vote my conscience and I just, that's the way I feel about the balance of harm that. That kids are going to get hurt this winter. And so that's me.
Thanks. Any, I'm just looking for anyone else who, um, trustee Decker, go ahead.
I don't, I just really again appreciate all the work that's gone into bringing forward a recommendation that I think. Everyone feels kind of sick to their stomachs about. I don't, I mean, it, it is in fact, I, I will be supporting this and I, um, you know. But I think everyone who has engaged with this issue recognizes how brutally hard. This is on families who have the younger kids. Um, how do you work at home when your kids are home? You can't. It, it's impossible. Um, I have a twelve year old and it's like, it's hard sometimes and he's amazing. And like it's, this is brutally, brutally hard. Um, and it's, you know, hard on so many other levels for kids who, um. Who need the supports that school provides and that we have not been able to mobilize yet to get those supports to kids. That is a fact. People continually ask about the American Academy of Pediatrics recommendations. And I don't want to get into all of that, except to say that I went and looked again today. At what their webpage says now, and it has been updated this fall to say that. The very specific and robust, um, recommendations that they have for how to be in schools. Are all predicated with a very simple sentence that says a community has to have its spread under control for this to be possible. Like if, if community spread is not under control. We're not even in that conversation yet. And I think all of us who have been a part of these. Dialogues and in this conversation wish like crazy that we were having a different conversation. We wish like crazy, we were talking about how to do it. Um, not whether we can, right? This is, um, it's brutally hard. And I, I hear you trustee Mercer, that people need to know that this is not something that's taken lightly. Because the consequences are enormous to continue in this, in this way. But, um, it really, until we get the spread under control, we are, you know, our, our hands are, are. We're, we're in a really difficult situation.
Thanks. It looks like trustee Lorenzen, um, wants to make a comment and then followed by trustee old person. So go ahead, trustee Lorenzen and then trustee old person.
Yeah, I, I think trustee Decker said it really well. None of us feels good about this. Um, and I, I like the, um, additional caveat that we will continue to look for other options. Um, I mean, none of us is going anywhere over Thanksgiving. I, so we, this is hugely disruptive to our families. So we can't, uh, worry about our own convenience. Um, it, and I understand how hard this is for families. But, but I think the worst thing that could happen is happened in other schools where they've run out of staff. And they've had to close altogether. And I guess that's what keeps me thinking, let's just hold steady rather than push our luck and maybe end up going the other way.
Thank you. And then trustee old person. Oh, hi trustee old person.
I made it to my location. Um, so I'm coming from Prior, Montana, but I wanted to, I support the motion. But as a parent of a second grader and after speaking with his teacher at the parent teacher conference. And knowing his classmates and their parents, I do see the need for K, K two to be there more. Um, because this is a foundation time, but this is a no win situation for anybody. And I really like what trustee Decker said in saying. It is disruptive, but we all, but we're a really awesome community. Missoula is a great community. I'm happy. I'm here raising my children and they're attending Missoula County Public Schools. But what we really need to do is as a community is support each other and make sure we're following the mask mandates. Because that gets our kids to school more days if our community spread is low. And I think I don't like to make it political because that's not how I operate within this. Because I think more of the public health and the safety of everybody, student, staff and our administrators. Um, so I'm in support of this if, if, if possible, because I do see that need as a parent of a second grader. But it's just a no win situation. And I think our community should really understand that. You know that we are, we were elected to be in these positions and that we are listening, I'm listening. And I think from my background as a BIPOC community member, board trustee. That I know the population I come from and work with, we are more susceptible to the harshness of COVID nineteen. And I, and it scares me every day. And I'm, I know I'm not the only parent like this. So I'm really cautious about this, but I do see that need.
Thank you. And it looks like trustee Hobbins would like to either add public, uh, trustee comment or discussion.
Yeah, I just want to add to the, um, my support for this motion and also really do appreciate the, that us, us looking at different alternatives for the, for the youngest kids. Um, I really think that we need to think about, I mean, I work in the mental health field in our community. And I feel like we need to think about not only the anxiety and pressure that this is putting on. Parents of students in school, but on our teachers who are going to school every day and supporting our students. And, you know, and many of them have families of their own and they're putting their families at risk and that kind of. I mean, I just, I have huge respect for our teachers who are going in there. And, um, and, and putting their lives at risk for all of our kids. And I just want to say that we need to really take into account what we're asking them to do. Um, which is why I'm supporting, listening to our public health officials, looking at the numbers in the community. Um, and trying to make the best decisions for everybody.
Thanks. Is there any other board comment? I'm just. Checking. I don't see any others. I would. Like to make a comment. I am not, um, voting on this issue because I'm a, um, a high school trustee. But I appreciate the thoughtfulness of everyone from our superintendent to our trustees, to the parents. To the community at recognizing there are. More entities impacted by COVID nineteen than others. It, things like families in transition, teachers, teachers at the elementary school level, um, group, you know. K through two-year-old or second grade students who learn differently and learn more productively if they get to be with their peers. And so I just want to echo what trustee Decker said. This is where none of us wanted to be, none of us. And I really appreciate that everyone is weighing in. I really appreciate that if I could have a magic wand and I could make us all just be something. Other than trustee is faced with an impossible situation. I would use that magic wand in a second. So I just want to say thank you to everyone, including the community. We're now about to take public comment, but I just want to say I really appreciate the thoughtfulness of everyone. The community, the trustees, the staff, the teachers, the custodial staff, Dr. Watson, everyone. Because we're all in this and we all want to have success. So with that, I'll turn it over to public comment and I'll stop my video.
Chair Holland, could you have, uh, trustee of Garris restate the motion? I just want to make sure I have it written down correctly.
Whoops. I would actually ask Tracy to restate the motion since I think she captured it. Better than, I mean, neither trustee of Garris nor I were keeping notes, just because I think we're both multitasking. And I think, um, Ms. Long might. Be the more appropriate person. Tracy, are you comfortable with doing that?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. It says here that he would make two additions for the December eighth to possibly bring forth. To the December eighth meeting feasibility plans or studies from K two, for K two. And for special areas to possibly go into the hybrid plus model, either looking externally or internally. And that's what I have.
Okay. So the overarching motion, just to make sure those were the modifications. But the overarching motion is that, um, K eight would remain in phase one of the M C P S reopening plan. Until the end of the first semester, which ends on January twenty second with that additional language. So does that help everyone in terms of what the motion is that will be taking public comment on? I'm seeing most trustee the either nodding their heads or not opposing my clarification. So with that, it looks like, um, Bob Carter would like to make public comments. So go ahead and then mute yourself. And once again, we just ask that you limit public comment to three minutes if you, if possible. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, assuming you can hear me. Uh, thanks, everybody for your thoughts and consideration. I completely agree with you in the fact that, uh, this impacts the entire community. It impacts people's livelihoods. It impacts kids' education. It impacts people's mental health. It impacts people's physical health. Uh, unfortunately, I'm on the side of you that the public health in this case outweighs the public education. And as a public education person, uh, I, I have to say that, you know, we can remediate these kids. That are losing something across the board. And I completely know how my little kids are losing something across the board. But we're not going to be able to get grandma back. We're not going to get someone's father back. And unfortunately, that's where I have to draw the line and say, in this case, public health outweighs the public education. And, uh, thanks for all you guys' work. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And it looks like Shannon Judge is the next in the queue to make public comment, followed by Tricia Owens.
Hi, um, my name is Shannon Judge. I'm a second grade teacher in the district. Um. Shannon is S H A N N O N, Judge J U D G E. Um, I would like to thank the task force for all of their hard work and discussion. And Dr. Watson, thank you for the opportunity to speak on Monday and share our concerns. I would really like to thank trustee Decker and Hobbins for your comments on the motion as well. Um, it's really nice to hear teachers' mental health brought up. Um. I would like to speak on my experience the past couple of weeks. I was a close contact because of a school, of an incident at school. And had to miss two weeks away from my students, which was the hardest two weeks of, um, the year. I constantly was worried. Thank goodness I tested negative, but I'm still worried that it could have been. Um, I tested without, with, not within this time that is best for showing that I had it. So I'm terrified that I might have exposed a student and I'd like to speak to, um, the five mitigation strategies. I have a smaller classroom and if I had all of my seventeen students in the classroom, I have tables. I cannot keep them three feet apart unless I had different furniture or I had kids sitting on the floor, which. Sometimes they like to do, but it's not comfortable for the whole day. I cannot do that with all of my students. So I appreciate that we're taking it slow. Um, I also am very concerned about my custodial staff. We are short-staffed and they're worried and concerned that they cannot, um. Keep up the cleaning efforts that we're promising, whether it's just normal day-to-day cleaning or. The deep disinfecting that needs to happen if there was someone who was positive or symptomatic. I'm also very nervous because I got to go back to school this week, which was awesome. And I got to see both my A day and my B day kids and it was so nice to be reunited. Um, but we're still seeing students who are coming to school with symptoms. Um, maybe getting Tylenol before they come and then are showing a fever later or didn't feel good before school. And that is terrifying. Sorry, um, that is terrifying as a teacher to know that. I could be back for two days and then have to be out for two weeks again because I'm a close contact. So I just really support this motion. Um, I'm worried about Thanksgiving travel and I'd like to wait and see what the numbers do after. Potentially people gather together and mix cohorts. Um, I'd also like to speak if we do bring students back. I think that students should come back. Those kids need to be in school. But we need to think very creatively because I worry that behaviors could, um, get worse in our classrooms. If students are forced to repeat the same thing on A days as they are in B. Days and as a teacher, um, left them to differentiate, but I'm already drowning trying to get remote learning done for my B day kids. And also kids in quarantine and kids that are close contacts and then adding other jobs for kids when they're there four days a week would be. Um, one more thing that I don't know I can do. Um, so thank you. I appreciate your time. I appreciate all of your work.
Thank you so much for public comment. Tricia Owens, um, please go ahead and make public comment.
Uh, my name is Tricia Owens, T R I C I A O W E N S. And I am a second grade teacher at Lowell Elementary. Um. I think the task force, they've been working good and I work closely with them. Um, and also thank you all for listening and, uh, I feel like teachers are finally feeling that their voices are being a little bit. Are heard a little bit better. Um, it's a little concerning being a K two teacher to, um, hearing. Um, wanting to push K two, um, back in the classroom quicker than others. I understand those foundational skills are so important. I teach them every single day. Um, I will say my classroom is one of those that I have four kids one day and twelve days the next, or twelve kids the other day. Um, on the days that I have twelve kids. I mean, we're, I'm at Lowell, I'm in a new building, but my classroom is still very small. And I have three kids at most tables and there's not six feet between them. So if I bring back all my kids every day, um, we're only adding four, but it's going to be really close. And we just can't keep, um, the distance we need. Um, and also I want those, I mean, I deal with fit families every day and kids that I want to see at school every day. But also we're at a school that ours, you know, our staffing is low. We need the support. We need to make sure our staffing is there so that we can have kids every day. Um. When we have, when we become a close contact, and especially when it's a kiddo, it's been taking out like six to twelve teachers. And staff, when that happens, it's a mess. I just got back from quarantine also. And when other staff members go on quarantine, the only thing we can do is group more kids together. And so it's not helping the situation if we're bringing more kids back every single day in school. Um, and I think teachers are putting a lot of effort into what they are sending home. So that they can build those foundational skills at home in a way that parents. so that they can build those foundational skills at home in a way that parents can practice. We're doing the very best we can. The last thing I think to keep in mind is that I almost lost my, yeah, I think I lost my train of thought. But um, I think that's most of it. I just would love to see them every day, but I would like, I don't want it to be at the cost of how hard or our mental health and what we're doing and make sure that when we make these decisions, we keep in mind that we have to be fully staffed. We have to do what's best for kids and keep everybody safe. Thank you.
Thank you. It looks like Mr. Carter raised his hand again, but since he's already had a chance to speak, Angie Palin would be the next person up. And then if Mr. Carter wants to make a second comment, he can re-raise his hand. So go ahead, Ms. Palin.
My name is Angie Palin, A N G I E P A L I N. I teach third grade at Franklin School. I appreciate all the work the committee has made, done, all the research they've done. You guys are working, working for us so well, and I really appreciate all that. I'm very concerned again about K2 kids coming back and then the, and as Dr. Watson said earlier on in the, in the presentation, we're having, we're in the yellow and the, in the K5 because we can't keep kids apart. And then if we start putting all of the kids in there all day, it's impossible to keep them apart, even third graders. I have 20, if I were to have my whole class, I would have 24 in my classroom. I can't keep the, the, I can't keep them apart if they're 24 in there. The cleaning, the pencil sharpening that I have to, you know, disinfect every time they sharpen a pencil. It's, it would be impossible. So I really beg that we stay into hybrid until at least the semester. If not, when, when the curve starts going down, it needs to go down. Again, I would feel like someone else mentioned, I would feel terrible being the cause of grandma not making it. My own mom is 84 years old and she, I can't, you know, I hardly get to see her. And it's, it's hard. My kids are making gains like you would not believe. I, we're doing parent-teacher conferences this week and I'm going through the STAR data. I'm going through the I-ready data. My kids are making gains like you would not believe because I can get to every kiddo in these smaller class sizes. I, they're making gains, they're reading better, they're doing math, subtraction with borrowing. If you're, have ever been a second or a third grade teacher, it's one of those things that gives you nightmares for weeks. My kids remembered how to do it from A-Day kids when they came back the next week on Tuesday, I thought, oh, great, I'm going to start all over again. They knew what to do. My B-Day kids knew what to do. We started multiplication. I had a little girl join her conference tonight with her parents, singing the three songs with me at the conference. They're, they're doing okay. It's not ideal. It's not great. It's a worldwide pandemic and we're doing what we can. Please keep our community safe. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I saw Ms. Williams had her hand up, but then it went down and then went back up. But let's start with Sarah with no last name, who's now first in the queue. Then we'll move to Ms. Williams.
Hi, I'm Sarah Lee, L E E, and I am a fifth grade teacher in Missoula. And I just first of all, want to say thank you all for the time you spend to do the work you're doing. I just wanted to touch on a couple of points. I know that staffing has come up. For me, I'm just terrified that if we bring students back four or five days a week, that our staff is going to get overwhelmed and then schools are going to have to shut down. And then will students will be learning remotely. And I love having my students two days a week. I'd love to have them more, but I just, I don't want to get shut down because we don't have the staff to carry all the teachers who keep becoming sick or close contacts. I also just wanted to say, I love that you guys are making this decision two months out right now. It's so nice to be able to plan, to be able to take care of December, take care of most of January, planning for what we need to do, for how we can best teach our students. I would love it if we could continue this trend, planning a month or two in advance so that we know what we're doing. Because in a normal year, we have the whole year planned out in July. So this year has been a challenge with not having that time to plan. So as much notice for all of us, teachers and parents would be lovely. But thank you for all that you do. And that's all I have to say.
Thanks for your public comments. And now it looks like Ms. Williams has her hand raised. So go ahead, Ms. Williams.
I apologize, I got kicked offline. I just want to speak out in, in favor of remaining in the hybrid model of two days a week with the K2 grades as well. I'm an extended resource teacher at Hawthorne in the grades K2. And I just wanted to share a little bit of, of what teachers go through in a day with, even with a small number of students like I have. I don't know if everyone's aware that when students come to school, the first thing they have to do is to wash their hands. When they go out to recess and they come back in, they have to wash their hands again. We have recess three times a day. So right now, at that point, we're at washing hands four times. Anytime a child gets ready to eat, they have to wash their hands. After they eat, they have to wash their hands. When they have snack, they have to wash their hands before they have snack. And they have to wash their hands after they have snack. I believe right now we're at about eight times of washing hands without even going to the bathroom or touching a nose or touching a mask. And so when we think about just the logistics of bringing, you know, 20 students back and they have to wash their hands eight times in a day minimum at 30 seconds per child. It's an extreme amount just in washing hands. It doesn't take into account when they touch a computer and you have to wash it. When they touch a doorknob and you have to wash it. When they touch the sink and you have to wash it. Right now, we're able to manage that with the number of students that we have. But with an increased number of students, I'm really concerned that in, in the general education classrooms, we won't be able to maintain the high, you know, degree at which we're clinging behind students and, and, you know, in conjunction with students in order to keep our children safe. So I would just like to advocate, just even on a logistics level, that we remain at the two days a week with all of our grades right now, other than a special population like the students that I work with. And in that case, I would like to continue to advocate that those students come to school for four days a week. With that small number, we are man, able to manage safely. And our students are benefiting tremendously, students with autism, with cognitive disabilities, with traumatic brain injury, need those four days. So I just want to advocate to, for those students to remain on a four-day schedule. Thanks.
Thank you. And it looks like Ms. Balu has her hand raised. And I'm thinking that Sarah will be taking her hand down again. Just don't want to not acknowledge someone who wants to make a second public comment. But Ms. Balu, go ahead.
You're running this classroom rather well, trustee Holland. I think you're doing great. Casey Balu, K A capital C, two small e's, B A L L O U, president of the Missoula Education Association with the fine educators that you've heard from. And honestly, I don't know if I can say it any better. I do, I do think that, you know, we've been saying the safe three S words all along because I love alliteration. Safe, slow, sustainable. And you can see that that's definitely supported with good reason this evening. So thanks for your time. Thanks for voting yes on this motion and for giving us time to plan.
Thank you for that public comment. I'm now looking. Since we have 130 people on the list, I just want to make sure I'm not, not seeing anyone who wants to make public comment. Hatton, do you see any? Oh, it looks like Cassie Murphy has her hand up. So Ms. Murphy, if you want to go ahead and make public comment. And Ms. Murphy, you need to unmute yourself first. Thanks.
Hi, so Cassie is C A S S I E and then M U R P H Y for Murphy. I currently am teaching first grade. And I just want the board to realize that when you're talking about why things are going well, it is because we can social distance with those small groups. I am consistently every week giving kids masks that I have bought and that are disposables because they can't keep them on their faces and struggle with that because they don't, their parents haven't provided them with something that actually fits their faces that well. And then also that this has put a lot of pressure on families, both sides, including myself. So currently I've had to make some hard decisions because my kids are currently in the MOA. I applied to get into the MOA but wasn't able to get into that program, which I won't get into because that has been a separate issue. But it has put a big damp because that has led to grandparents having to watch my kids because I'm not comfortable with them going to school. Because I know it's really hard for kids not to be by each other. And that's the big indicator of how they might catch COVID-19. So it's just put a big strain because now with the numbers going up and grandparents are in their 70s and 80s and they all have health concerns, it has just put me in a position of putting them at risk, which has been super hard for my family.
Thank you. And I apologize when I say thank you. My voice always goes up. I don't know, it sounds dismissive, but I'm, that's just how I say it. I really appreciate, and all the board appreciates, our public comments. So sorry for my inflection. And it looks like Mary L Y N D E S. I don't want to mispronounce your name, but if you can say and spell your last name, please go ahead and make public comment.
I can. My name is Mary, M A R Y Lines, L Y N D E S. And I'm an instructional coach at Franklin Elementary School. And I want to start off by thanking everybody, the committee and everybody that have put the time and the effort into really researching this situation. It is a pandemic and it's hard for everybody. But I have to appreciate that we're looking at going to January 26th. There are so many good reasons for that educationally, as far as keeping kids focused, teachers planning, families being able to plan, that's really important. And I, I appreciate the thought and considering that because that's the easiest way for us to make the best gains with our kids in this situation. And I also, this year is, one of my responsibilities is part of a cohort with the first graders and the elementary kids. And I really want to say how much progress we are making because specialists are pushing in. Everybody is pushing in during the win time where we're looking at data and we're making sure that kids get exactly what they need in smaller numbers. And so we've got good, strong relationships with kids, even though it's only two days a week, which is not ideal. But I feel like the kids are making progress and we're working with families to get the connection so they can continue to work with things at home across the board. So I think we're getting better at this. I'm concerned that if we were to go to four days, and I know a lot of people have expressed this, so I'll just say it fast, that we can't keep the kids apart, especially the K2 kids. They're used to hugs, they're used to being close together. They're just really physical bodies. And our rooms aren't big enough to actually keep them apart in a comfortable way if we get, you know, 20 or 22 kids in a room. So I really think that when it comes time to considering bringing the second kindergarten through second grades back early, we should really think about it because I think we're making progress with them. And I, I know we're making progress with them. I'm going to say that very confidently. We are making progress with them in a very difficult situation. And cramming everybody together in the small spaces that we have would be very difficult to keep them apart and safe. So I want to thank everybody for their time and it's hard for everybody. And teachers truly do acknowledge the hard hardship on families and parents, but we're really concerned about keeping kids and families safe. Thank you.
Thank you for that public comment. And it looks like Angela Trenell, if I'm pronouncing it correctly, is next in the queue.
Yes, thank you. Hey, Angela Trenell, Angie, A N G I E, Trenell, T R A N E L. I am a mom of two kiddos, one at Sentinel, one at Lewis and Clark. And I'm the new office secretary at Lewis and Clark. My point tonight is just to thank the teachers, the effort that I see, that our teachers are putting into. They hear a kiddo's out, they're sick, we don't know why. They get folders down there, they get homework down there. They are getting so much done and, and, and not throwing a fit, not being frustrated. I mean, they are, our staff is exceptional and I think we need to recognize that. And I think we need to hold on to this hybrid. And believe me, as a mom, I want my kids in school. I want them there four days a week. I need them there. But I also recognize that this is where we need to be. And I want to thank our teachers and our staff and our custodians. And I think we need to continue with this hybrid model and, and we need to stay safe. But we need to acknowledge the effort that our teachers are doing. Thank you.
Thank you. And it looks like there's a phone number ending in two seven. Who wants to make public comment? If you want to unmute yourself?
Sure, Chris Lonsbury, C H R I S, L O U N S, B U R Y. I just want to echo some of what was said. Definitely a big thank you to the board and to the teachers for all that's happening. But I do think at some point, the board does need to grapple with the fact that when we're looking at community spread, some of that community spread and the drive behind case numbers is the fact that kids aren't in school and so therefore they're in care. And those care situations are not as well-regulated, are not as well-controlled environment, which means the community spread factor is occurring to those kids outside of school where the environment can be more controlled. And I do think the idea of looking at K2 or K5 separately from middle school and high school, where remote learning is more effective and can be better managed, needs to be considered even separately than looking at it as K8. Because the fact is those grades are very different from kindergarten through eighth grade. And so I would just encourage the board to really look, when they're talking about safety and public safety around that, that by continuing to, you know, have kids have to go to care because they're not in school, we continue to contribute to community spread. We see that community spread in the school, the percentage is significantly different than the rest of the community. So by continuing to send kids back out into the community rather than to school, we run the real likelihood of increasing community spread inside the school. Thank you.
Thank you. And then it looks like there was someone on the phone with the last two digits of two four. Or I'm sorry. Nope. Two seven just spoke. I'm apologizing. I'm just trying to keep track of the number of participants here. Is there any other public, oh, yeah, Luhan just went down. Any other public comment? Again, we appreciate all public comment. And it looks like Ms. Williams wants to make a second comment.
You know, just as, thank you, Ty Williams, T H A I, W I L L I A M, A M S. Just as I'm listening to this, it, it's making me, you know, go back and reflect on the decision that was made to, you know, to move to, to be in the hybrid and to stay there. One of the things that really seemed to push the board in that direction was teachers saying, this is working. Having my students two days a week means I meet with every single student, every single day. Every student is getting individual attention. And you know, I'm hearing that right now, kids are, and families are in a lot of need. And I'm just going to, you know, reach out to the board and say, remember why we put, we were in this two-day model and why we stayed there last time was because teachers said it was working and that spoke to you last time. And that's what drove your decision last time. And I ask that you remember that that is continuing right now. That hasn't changed. Kids are getting that attention. So please reflect on what drove your decision last time and let that possibly drive your decision this time. Thanks.
Thank you. And it looks like Matt Koska would like to make public comment. Go ahead.
Hi, this is Matt Koska. I'm a resource teacher at Russell Elementary School. And I appreciate the concern for all the students who are only receiving two days of instruction a week. And, you know, the burden that places on the community in terms of community spread and those kids needing care. Unfortunately, self, our staff is taxed as it is and trying to bring kids back four days is just going to be logistically almost impossible. So as a resource teacher and working with those vulnerable populations, I feel like we should be, instead of discussing instructional days, how we can increase instructional time for those students who are in most need, whether that's fit or special ed. And so right now, our students are getting about five hours instruction a day. So if we can increase that even by an hour or an hour and a half, those kids would be receiving up to 20% more instruction over the course of the week. And for our special ed And for our special education population, that means they can spend more time with their cohort in their core instruction, but get the targeted instruction they need outside of the classroom hours are agreed upon schedule of like eight to two. But we have to understand that would require a lot of logistical changes, whether it's busing or the janitorial staff cleaning the classrooms. But so my recommendation would be to focus on instructional time and how we can increase it for those students rather than trying to figure out this four-day-a-week um situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? I will check with those on Zoom.
One additional hand from Kim Olson.
Okay. Can you hear me? Okay. Hi, everyone. Um, so my name's Kim Olson, O L S O N. I'm a fifth grade teacher um and also a parent of an MOA student. Um, and I just want to remind everyone, um, I that this this epidemic or pandemic is is out of control in the entire country. And as we heard from um a mom who is in healthcare right now earlier this evening, we're feeling the effects in our hospitals here in Missoula. Um, and definitely in billings. I mean, at this point, we can count on on this getting worse. And I feel like we should be really planning on a set date to to vote remote learning so we can plan for that transition. Um, we can also see by the data that the K five staff is disproportionately affected um uh compared to all of the other schools in six, eight to nine, twelve. So in K five, I mean, for thirty-three students who have contracted the virus, twenty-two staff members have. And I just find it, I struggle to think uh how we're okay with any amount of these uh, any amount of people uh contracting the virus. The other thing too, I would question um the 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 assertion that the majority of cases are are not transmitted in schools because there are gaping holes in our metrics. Um, we know that um this virus is transmitted asymptomatic and and at the K five level, young kids are the asymptomatic carriers of the virus. And we do not know the number of asymptomatic active cases on the district because we are not testing for them. Um, and from a paper I read today that was posted on the National Institute of Health's uh uh website, um asymptomatic carriers can shed similar amounts of virus asymptomatic patients. And that early detection of asymptomatic carriers is critical to contain their emission and transmission, and none of this is happening right now. And as we can hear on the national news, um with the Thanksgiving holidays coming um upon us, uh, there's basically, we are being told as a nation to avoid being indoors in groups with anyone other than your family members. And sadly, I mean, obviously that's what's happening in our schools. We know with all of our efforts to mask and wash hands, we are seeing the greatest number of positive cases in our K five schools. And this really concerns me um when I think of all of my colleagues and all of the children we teach and their families. Uh, we're not in isolated, contained, closed system. And the infections that we are seeing right now are going to impact our healthcare system here in Missoula. So I think we should even move beyond just uh extending the hybrid model to really planning um when we're going to go remote in light of the increasing numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm checking for any other indications of public comment. I'm not seeing any hat in, are you?
No, I am not.
So I'll check one more time. Let's go back up. Not seeing any, then having a second motion under consideration and having taken board comment in public comment. This is a K twelve action item, so it would be trustees who are K twelve trustees voting on it. I will um, I didn't even, I didn't even ask for the votes yet, but hands are going up. So anyway, I was just going to say I will take the yes votes first, the no vote second, as is typically the case. And so all those in favor of the motion from K twelve trustees, please indicate by either saying yes or raising your hand. Four. And then all those trustees at the K twelve level opposed, please indicate by raising your hand. And so I should have been keeping tracks, so I have to apologize. If you don't mind doing it one more time, just so I can make sure the record is clear. All the trustees at the K twelve level in favor of the motion, please raise your hand and I will indicate who's voting. So trustee Agueras, trustee Hopkins, trustee McDonald, trustee Lorenzen.
Trustee Decker has her hand raised and so.
And trustee Lorenzen, if I didn't say it, and trustee McDonald, if I didn't say it, and then all those opposed. And trust, okay, trustee McDonald had her hand up and then down. So trustee Mercer is opposed, so the motion carries. So the motion passes. And so we will continue on with the agenda, which is nine new business, which is to approve a grant application summary from the I'm trying to think of right word. But anyway, lifelong learning center has submitted a forty thousand dollar grant application to the Department of Health and Human Services to support adult English as a second language instruction and services. So it looks like Pat, you will be explaining this um grant.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, so um this is a Department of Public Health and Human Services grant and Adult Education received the grant last year as a one-year-only grant. Um, additional funds were available and uh Dickinson Lifelong Learning Center was asked to apply, which they they did and would be awarded these funds. Um, uh, again, for uh um adult English language learner services at Dickinson Lifelong Learning Center. Uh, like last year, it'll be a one-year grant uh with potential for extension only if there's funds available. So uh, the request is to approve this grant.
Thanks, Pat. Any questions first from trustees? Not currently seen hands up. So the recommendation is to approve the grant application summary. Is there a motion? Moved by trustee Decker, second by trustee old person, kind of by trustee Agueras. So is there any more discussion? I will just add one thing. I really appreciate Monique Fortman's ability to keep track of grants and supporting this um opportunity to get this money to help English language learners in the community for instruction and learning. So thanks. If someone can pass it along, either Dr. Watson or Pat to Monique, really appreciate that. Any other board comment? Seeing none. Any public comment? I'll scroll down. I'm not seeing any. Hatton, are you?
That's correct.
Okay, so all those trustees in favor of the motion to approve the grant application, please indicate by raising your hand or raising your virtual hand. So.
Vogel is yes.
Thanks, trustee Vogel. So the motion passes unanimously. And then we move on to nine B, which is to approve a wage increase for divine divine versus divine employees. And so um I don't know if it's Dave or Dr. Watson, but it's a wage increase of two dollars and seventy-five cents per hour for sub custodians effective eleven twenty-three, twenty twenty. So.
I'm happy to go ahead and proceed. We we do normally come to the board usually in April or May with uh uh proposals for substitute rates of pay. We actually have thirty-three different uh categories for subrates. Director McWilliams uh came to us wanting to increase the subrate for custodians and because of the difficulty we're having right now, the sub custodians and recruitment. Um, you actually heard the teacher Shannon Judge uh in her discussion talking about some of the difficulties in trying to get the subs. So rather than wait till next year, we thought we would come to the board uh a little bit early, at least on this one, and request a uh rate increase uh to help in recruitment of substitute custodians.
Any questions for Dave, any trustee? Oops, my hand down. Go down. I.
I have a question, if that's okay.
Oh, sure. Go ahead, trustee Decker.
Thanks. I'm wondering what hourly rate that brings our sub custodians up to, and I'm wondering how that compares to our teacher subs.
You bet. Um, this would bring the sub custodian rate up to thirteen dollars and twenty-five cents an hour. Um, our current rate for general subs uh for teachers is eleven forty-three an hour. But as you're aware, we have hired a permanent subs in our buildings and those subs are being paid thirteen fifty an hour. Um, in addition, we're also offering insurance benefits to those as well. Um, and as Dr. Watson indicated earlier, we're actually looking to uh see if we could not uh hire some additional permanent subs for our buildings to meet some of the growing need that we have.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions for Dave? I'm not seeing any hands up, so.
Trustee, trustee Lorenzen and trustee Mercer both had their hands up. I don't know if they have questions.
I'm not, I'm not seeing them at all. But trustee Decker, go ahead. And then trustee Mercer, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry. I think it was trustee Lorenzen, not me.
Oh.
That was a carryover from the previous vote.
Okay, then trustee Mercer might have his only hand up.
I was just asking, so the the health insurance, does it ever kick in over like twenty hours or?
So the.
You're asking people to come into a hazardous environment. I mean, might not be bad to cover their risk of getting sick.
Yeah, I I do understand that and that we, it is something we discussed, what we currently how we determine uh eligibility outside of even the contract is under the ACA. Um, we follow the Affordable Care Act guidelines and so um, we do track the hours of all of our substitutes regularly and 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 review and see if they would become eligible for insurance benefits. But your point, trustee Mercer, is well taken.
So, just so I can clarify, um, the benefits are being awarded to permanent subs. And the recommendation we're considering now is about sub custodians, or am I confused?
No, no, the questions were asked about the 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 certified subs, but for our, and the permanent subs, but for the custodial subs, they work piecemeal. They 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 choose and pick the jobs. We currently have seven in the district. Um, though they're not always particularly regular. Um, and so I think uh Burley indicated to me that he has maybe three that are fairly consistent in being able to sub. Um, so this is not their, under this position, they're not being offered additional benefits. Um, it would be just the raise up to thirteen twenty-five an hour, uh, which uh Burley did a market analysis and believes that this may help him in recruitment of substitutes for those positions.
Okay, thanks. I just, I wanted to make sure that I understood Cohen, trustee Mercer's question because it was a little bit different than the requests. Oh, trustee Mercer has his hand up again. Trustee Mercer, do you have another question?
Sorry, that's just a remnant. My bad.
Okay, sorry. It's, you know, it's Zoom land. So anyway, apologies. The point under consideration is to request a wage increase of two dollars and seventy-five cents per hour for the sub custodians effective eleven twenty-three, twenty twenty. And a final question, that's a pay, um what do you call it? A pay thing where everyone would be getting a different pay raise after twenty? After eleven twenty-three, so that's why the the request is at twenty twenty-three or eleven twenty-three. Is that correct, Dave?
Yes.
Okay. So, notwithstanding my meandering, any other questions? So then I would be, the recommendation is a motion that the trustees approve, the two dollars and seventy-five cents, two dollars and seventy-five cents per hour wage increase for sub custodians effective eleven twenty-three, twenty twenty. Is there such a motion?
This is trustee Wake. I'll make the motion.
Thanks. And trustee Hopkins seconded. Any more discussion? Only that we just heard from a lot of people that custodians are really valuable right now, so this is probably a really good way to move forward to make sure our schools are being safe. And I see trustee Mercer still has his hands up and trustee Decker has his, her hand up, so comments?
Mine's actually new. I just want to say thank you for bringing this forward. And if there's anything else in the future that can be addressed with application of money, I hope we don't hesitate to think about doing that.
Thank you. And then trustee Decker?
Yeah, I am glad to see wages being increased for what are, you know, pretty low-paid and really critically important positions. I'd love to see us look at other roles in the district when we can to try to ways the, raise those wages too, um, including for paras and for subs. Um, because we're seeing how super critical those roles are in keeping kids in school, keeping our classrooms open. Um, we just have got to make those attractive roles for good people to fill.
Any other board comment? I'll echo what both the most recent trustee said. Any public comment? Apologies, just scrolling down. Hatton, I'm not seeing any. Oh.
We just got Mr. Service.
Mr. Service.
Good evening. Uh, this is Jeff Service, S E R V I S S. I am the uh custodial representative to MMCO Local forty-seven eleven. And um I think it's great. You're going to pay the sub custodians an extra two seventy-five an hour. Um, I would like to see also your regular custodians get also an increase because as you know, we have been working really hard to keep the schools safe, keep the schools clean. You know, for example, at Russell Elementary, every morning the custodians, um, they have to shampoo seven to ten of their circle time rugs just so that they're clean, so that this, the students can have their circle time. Um, you know, this is something, of course, we didn't do on a regular basis, every day, meaning um before the COVID pandemic. I would just like to see um that we also as custodians get a raise too, two seventy-five an hour. That's quite a bit. I was in the last negotiating, um I was on the last negotiations and the opening offer for us was ten cents an hour. So it's, um, I guess I'm looking forward to a year from now when we go sit down at the bargaining table again and see what the school district can offer us because, like I say, we've been working hard, we're we're very stressed out. Um, you know, it's, it's, it's been very tough on us. Um, but yeah, sub custodians, they're important too. Um, today I just found out that I am on two-week leave because of I'm a close contact with another custodian who tested positive for COVID nineteen. So, you know, this is something that I envisioned um when this all started out, what if one of us custodians gets it and the fact that we work together. Um, so I guess thank you and have a good evening. Thanks.
Thank you for those comments. And I now the motion is that the trustees approve the two dollars and seventy-five percent the motion is that the trustees approve the two dollars and seventy-five percent hour wage increase for sub custodians effective eleven twenty-three, twenty twenty. Um, all those in favor, raise your hand in blue, yellow, or in real life.
Vogel is yes.
Thanks, trustee Vogel. And it looks like it has passed unanimously. And with that, other than an aside between keeping track of thumbs up, real hands raised, blue hands, and voice votes on phone, it's an interesting world we now live in. So with that being said, public comment on non-agenda items, because we like to take them at the beginning and end of every meeting, so is there anyone who would like to make any public comment on a non-agenda item at this point? And I'm still scrolling for any indications, and I don't see any Hatton?
That's correct.
So we are adjourned.